Welcome, everybody, to the Springfield City Council Chamber. Appreciate everybody coming tonight. It's an important issue in Springfield, an important meeting, and not a typical issue that we discuss in the Springfield City Council. We have all kinds of other things we discuss. But this is an issue that I think affects and could affect all of us. So we're, we, we have a chance tonight for everybody to participate in creating requirements and given ideas on the, anything regarding the Springfield, the Regional Justice Center that we'll be, we'll be constructing. The people in front of me are from Department of Capital Assets Management and Maintenance. That's a state department which is responsible for all the state buildings that are built. And this is, I don't know everybody's full name, but this is Adam Bakie in front, in front of me. He is the Commissioner of the State of Capital Assets Management and, and Maintenance. And Adam, if you want to introduce your, your staff, hit the little green button there.
Okay. Good, good evening, folks. Chairman Allen and to the other councilors who are here, and I think as importantly, to all the members of the public that came out. Are you united to hear me? Okay. I wanted to just, first off, just say thank you to all of you for coming out this evening. I know it's a beautiful evening, and there's probably a lot of other things you'd like to be able to be doing. So we're hopefully going to make it worth your while to be here and be able to answer as many of your questions this evening as possible. I am joined by several of my colleagues this evening, and in fact, they're going to be presenting just some basic information about the project, where we stand with the project, and what the next steps on the project are going to be that may answer many of your questions. And then again, we hope to collect information from you. We will field some questions here. We also welcome input that you may have that can help guide us as we move forward on this important project. So I'm joined today by Scott Shilt, who is our courts planner, Kendra Howes, Peter Woodford, and Debbie Russell, who's our Director of Leasing. And I'm going to turn it over to Debbie, who can walk us through a presentation.
Thank you. Just a couple other things to do. So one thing I need to do is formally say, welcome to a finance committee meeting, the finance committee meeting of April 30th, 2025, of the Finance Committee of the Springfield City Council. So we're running this, it shouldn't change much about it, but there's a couple city council protocol things we'll do. That was one of them, announcing the beginning of the meeting. And the other part will be later, when we close the meeting. Most of the meeting will run in a normal way of presenting and, and questions, et cetera. We've invited, just if you're wondering, the, the process tonight, or the, the agenda, it's going to be Adam's team will present, you know, I'm going to talk for five minutes, and Adam's team will present. And then we're going to have questions from the city council. And you see how, you know, several city councilors are here. They'll each have three minutes as we go around to ask their questions. We do have a, like a bell tonight to, to make sure nobody goes over the three-minute mark. That will apply to both the councilors and also to members of the public. So after, after they speak, after the council speaks, then we have a, a list of questions that have been submitted. So I'll call up people who submitted something, you know, online or whatever. And some people will, will just have a chance to speak at that point about what they submitted or about anything else relative to the project that they want to talk about. I thought it would be appropriate, since we don't, committee meetings, we don't do this, but we do it at every city council meeting, and that is, say, the Pledge of Allegiance. We've got such a group here tonight from different walks of life, I thought that was appropriate to do. So if you could just stand, the flag is behind me, and appreciate, just appreciate. I'll start it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for, for that. In terms of the decorum of the meeting, we have a pretty good plan on the agenda and questions and stuff. I would just ask you to be as respectful and as, you know, as polite as you could be. There may be things you hear that you don't like. If you can hold on to your agitation and just wait to the right time to bring that up or whatever, I really appreciate it. These are the people that are running the process to figure out when this court, where this courthouse is going to get built. So it's, it's amazing, it's great that they're here. The way this came about is I went to a meeting in January that they were running over in the Dwight Street Courthouse, Dwight Street State Building, and also they had run a Zoom meeting. And I left to, I attended both, and I just thought that Springfield could do, could more people from Springfield should be involved. That was simply it. I wrote a letter to Adam, and he replied right away that they'd be happy to come and do another presentation. So that's how this happened. After, the role of the Springfield City Council, or me tonight, is just as convener. We brought people together, we set up the meeting, they came. And after this, who knows if we have any, any other role, but we have that role tonight. And I really appreciate people coming. So thank you. At this point, I think we could just move to Debbie doing her, doing the presentation on behalf of D-CAM.
Next slide, please. The Springfield Regional Justice Center project, the project is for the acquisition of leased space for the Massachusetts Trial Court for a Springfield Regional Justice Center to replace the existing Roderick Island Courthouse and the adjacent building at 80 State Street. The new facility will house the Hampton County Superior Court, Springfield District Court, Hampton Probate and Family Court, Springfield Juvenile Court, and the Western Massachusetts Housing Court, approximately 300,000 square feet of space for judicial administrative detention and court services. Next slide, please. The Springfield Regional Justice Center project is to expedite delivery. The Commonwealth is seeking a private partner to, one, identify and provide a location within the city of Springfield; two, permit and construct a new facility consistent with the architectural program developed by the Massachusetts Trial Court and D-CAM; three, lease the completed facility to the Commonwealth for a 40-year term with two 10-year extension options. At its meeting on January 21st, 2025, the Asset Management Board voted to approve this proposed approach to delivering the project. This review and vote did not contemplate or evaluate any particular site or proposal. The next steps are, one, finalize an RFP, so the request for proposal. D-CAM is currently working with the Massachusetts Trial Court to finalize programming requirements and comparative criteria that will be outlined in the RFP. The purpose of this meeting is to hear community priorities that may be incorporated into the final RFP. Step number two is to advertise the RFP. Step number three is to receive proposals, evaluate the proposals, and select a proposal. Four is to negotiate a lease. The anticipated timeline is as follows: issue the RFP, advertise in accordance with Chapter 7(c), Section 36, the second quarter of 2025; question-and-answer session in a bidders conference the third quarter of 2025; proposal submission deadline anticipated to be the third quarter of 2025; the proposal selected the first quarter of 2026; and the lease executed the second quarter of 2026. The Asset Management Board authorization requires D-CAM to seek maximum competition in the public interest. D-CAM expects to hire a transaction advisor in May to help market the opportunity regionally and nationally. The transaction advisor will also provide strategic guidance, evaluation support, and negotiation assistance throughout this process. The transaction advisor will help ensure a highly robust, competitive, open, and fair procurement process. For community priorities, key priorities D-CAM and the Trial Court have heard to date include proximity to public transportation, accessibility for jurors and other court uses, a central location in the city of Springfield, new modern space that meets contemporary security standards, replace the existing buildings as quickly as possible, and support or sustain local economic development and downtown vitality. So what we want to know from you is what other factors are important to you. Do you have specific priorities or concerns? And are there additional economic, environmental, or community development goals that should be considered? This last side, last slide goes over the ongoing engagement with D-CAM. We do have a website on the mass.gov for the Springfield Regional Justice Project. And Kendra Howes on our team, she is the one to reach out to with any questions. Thank you.
Can we please go back one slide in the presentation? Is that it?
Yes, please, thank you.
You're going to... You all set with that now? Or... Did you want to say more about that slide? Okay.
I think we're all, we're all set with the slide.
You're all set, okay. So first, I, I want to acknowledge the people who helped us put this meeting together. And Susan Kokoyakis has been like the main person helping me with this. But the technical people, and anybody who knows me in my personal life, is dreading the fact that I'm going to do something wrong technically here. So, so I've got, made every provision that George can run the microphones and all that sort of stuff. So just thanks in advance for Steve Carey and George and, and Jose and the Focus Springfield team. They'll be helping, and we haven't had any glitch yet, and they'll be making sure we don't have any. So appreciate that. So we're at that point where we get, the councilors get three minutes, and I'm going to start with Councilor Sean Curran, here on my right. Sean, use your own microphone.
Thank you. I just had a question for the team. Was there any thought of splitting the courthouse in two, like they have in Hampshire County? So you could have like the register of deeds, housing, and probate in one courthouse in the city, and then perhaps the criminal division in another courthouse? And that way, you kind of spread out the economic development benefits, as well as it might be easier to cite. Is that...
I think those are, those are good points, counselor, and definitely things that speak to a more, I guess, a separated model. But in fact, the trend, and really, the court administrator, Tom Ambrosino, is going to be joining us. He got stuck in traffic en route here, and this is really a question for him ultimately. But I believe if he were here, what he would say is that the trend within the Massachusetts Trial Courts is toward these regional justice centers, which actually consolidate all the functions in single buildings. And that gives them some economy of scale that allows them to have a lot of the supporting functions that support court operations be shared across all the different courts, which is more efficient for the building itself, as well as for the operations of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Move it along. Caterie?
Thank you, Tim. First of all, I'd like to thank you for coming to listen to the people of Springfield. And obviously, there's a lot of, lot of interest here tonight. I am particularly interested in the courthouse. I've had several relatives that have worked there. I have three that are still working there. So I'm hoping it's going to be quick. I'm hoping it's going to be healthy, and I'm hoping it's going to be downtown. So those are my wishes, and I'm going to yield my time to all these people who showed up.
Thanks, Caterie. Counselor Edwards.
I have no question. I just want to say thank you for coming, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to the constituents and the residents of the city of Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to thank you for coming here. I'm the Vice President of the City Council, and it means a lot. I do have questions to be dealt, because I think that's where a lot of the contention is. So I just want to be direct and exact question.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the direct, directness, because we also have heard there's a lot of uncertainty about that out there. The simple answer to the very direct question is no. The, as was presented in the presentation, the vote that was taken by the Asset Management Board, which is the only formal action that has taken place to date on this, merely authorizes the process, which will be used to both receive proposals, evaluate those proposals, select one of those proposals, and the proposals will include both the site and the development team that will design and build it and operate and maintain it for us as our landlord. And then we will then, from them, one of those, the successful proposal will execute the project.
Perfect. Thank you, because I think there was a lot of rumors going around that the site had been chosen. So I want to thank you for that. And the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that we do have a responsible employer ordinance to make sure that women, minorities, veterans, folks with disabilities, and most importantly to me, as Springfield residents, get the opportunity with anyone that comes or is chosen for the RFP to build on the site or be employed. And so we hope that you will include those goals in the RFP contract. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I know that wasn't quite a question, but I'd like to respond.
Sure.
We, two very important things that I think are very relevant to that. One is that even though the project will be constructed under a private construction contract, the, because it will be for a public facility, the authorization we have requires that the workers on that job will be paid prevailing wage, consistent with, if it were a public project. We also have, as an agency, we have requirements to work toward cultivating diversity in both the subcontracting and the contracting on the project, as well as the workforce of the project. And we have not finalized exactly what the specific goals will be, but we do indeed hope that we, and expect that we will carry forward some of those same diversity expectations that we have on our own projects onto this one as well.
I was just going to say thank you. Prevailing wage was my next question, but I didn't know if my three minutes was up. So I'm glad that you answered it. Thank you.
We didn't prepare this ahead of time.
Thanks, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Delgado?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to say thank you for D-CAM for making the trip out to Springfield. I know this is the second one since January, but especially with how important of a decision this is, and this is one of the busiest courthouses in the state, if not the busiest, from what I understand. And this impacts everybody from residents to businesses. I'm glad that in there you're taking in account that transportation, particularly many of our residents who use public transportation, and a lot of the systems have already built and been designed to go through the downtown. You know, for me, all I want is a fair and open process, and I think that's what many folks want. So I don't have any say of that. I do want it to be in Springfield, particularly with what I just mentioned, but also knowing the fact that the current building is a sick building. So, so the couple of questions I have are, can you give us examples of other sites that have this same kind of public-private partnership? That's the first question, I guess.
Sure. Well, first off, I'll reinforce your request that it be in the city of Springfield. We absolutely agree. Both, we think it's the right thing to do, but also it's what the law says. We actually are required that this courthouse be located in the city of Springfield. So there's no question it will be in the city of Springfield. Check. In, in, and I apologize, I just lost track of what your actual question was.
No, I just asked of other examples of public-private partnerships.
Yeah. Well, the most recent example, which in fact was part of what motivated us to pursue this approach with this project, is the State Police Crime Lab, which is actually a very large building, not quite as large as this, but of comparable size, where for very similar reasons, we elected to make, put that out as a, for a private party to construct and for us to lease it back on a long-term basis, rather than building it ourselves. And that enables the state police to realize the crime lab much faster than they otherwise would have been able to if it had to fit into our capital plan, which is fundamentally the same reason that we are pursuing this approach with this project. And I think we've heard loud and clear from you just now and from many others how important it is to advance the new facility and get it open as quickly as possible, and that is fundamentally why doing it this way was ultimately chosen. We also have, we're currently contemplating a project in downtown Boston where a substantial facility for the Department of Mental Health will likely be executed in a similar manner. We also have, we are literally the largest commercial tenant in Massachusetts. So we lease now nearly eight million square feet across the Commonwealth in virtually every community in the Commonwealth, every part of the state. And we deliver, obviously, a whole lot of public services and public functions in leased space. So this is not a particularly new or novel model in that respect. And included within that is a very substantial amount of court facilities. So this is also not the first court. This will be the largest. It will be very significant because of that, but it is not even the first court that we've delivered in this, in a leased space for the Commonwealth. There also are numerous examples across the country of courts of similar size that are built in, using similar models, and a very consistent refrain in those for why the public authorities chose that approach was the, how efficient and expeditious the delivery of the facility could be. And again, that was what we've heard, we've been hearing very consistently, I've only been in this role for a little over a year and a half, but I've been hearing very consistently that the real priority here for the users of this building is to get a replacement building as quickly as possible, and that's, that's why we're here.
I do have two more questions, try to make them quick, one for you and maybe one for our, our city team folks, which is, I also want to know, are there any plans at the moment on the current site? Because I think that's another big piece there that I'm worried about as well. I don't want a site to, that site, whether it gets demolished or not, just to sit there vacant for who knows how long, right? That's, it's a, you know, pretty important site within downtown, so.
Yeah, I think we, we do not have specific plans, and it would, I think, be inappropriate for the state to impose specific plans on that property, even though it is state-owned. We really look forward to working closely with representatives from the city of Springfield and other interested stakeholders to envision what the future of that property should be. We have a number of cases across the Commonwealth in several gateway cities where... where former court facilities, we've basically facilitated the redevelopment of those properties in partnership with the minute, the host municipality. In many cases, using a tool where we actually convey the property for a dollar to the municipality. And the municipality actually runs the entire process for the redevelopment. We also, in cases where the municipality doesn't prefer that option, we have done a number of different processes for working with developers. What I can say pretty confidently is we don't anticipate a state need for that site at the end of this, when the, when the new facility opens.
And then, last question, Mr. Chair, is just, I'm just curious to know what the potential financial impacts to the city are in terms of a public-private building, depending on where it goes? What is that, what are the financial impacts? Have our team from Echo Dev and the CAFOS Office thought anything about that? Sorry for putting you on the spot.
Kathy, yeah, Tim or Kathy Bono, if you could speak to that. This is Tim Sheehan, Chief Development Officer of the City of Springfield.
Yeah, put your mic on. Good evening, everyone. First of all, Commissioner, it's great to have you and your team back out in Springfield. I want to convey from the city's, the mayor's perspective and my perspective that this process is the right process. First of all, we've all been concerned about the condition of the courthouse and the need for a new facility. And this is expediting that process. In the meantime, it being fully privately owned, there's an impact relative to it being taxable relative to the city. So ultimately, it'll be new growth. So from my perspective and the CAFOS perspective and the mayor's perspective, this process ultimately leads to a better position for the city of Springfield. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Is that, can I just ask you, is that because we will be receiving property tax revenue? Or Kathy, could you speak to that, please? This is Kathy Bono, Chief Financial Officer, the City of Springfield.
Yes, Counselor. It will be because it will be taxable. The land and the building on the property will be taxable. It will also be huge economic development and bring more people into the city. And as I think the team said, it'll be a one-stop shop. And I think that makes sense, too. But yes, it'll be a huge increase for, for the taxes for the city.
So what, what, with the current Hall of Justice, is there any financial?
We get, the state does pay in our state assessment. It's lumped in. We only get about 200 and something thousand. So it's maybe 40,000 attributed to the courthouse right now. So it's, there's no comparison to what we will be getting.
Okay, right.
I guess, Mr. Chair, if I could just add to that. I mean, I do see like a benefit from public-private partnership. But, you know, ensuring that it's in downtown, there have been a number of businesses, residents, that have invested, being around. I think of all the lawyers who are downtown, they've invested their businesses in other organizations around the courthouse. So to me, while there's a boost wherever it goes in this private development, you know, if it's not in downtown, that's, I also look at that as a potential impact to the folks who've already invested being near the current courthouse. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
First of all, with regards to the existing courthouse, we have had some preliminary conversations with DCAM. The city does have an ongoing interest, obviously, with the economic development that's happened in that area. We would like to see that continue. We are planning on advancing with a ULI analysis of the area, not just particularly the courthouse, but the whole area, including First Church as well. So that master planning is, is in its preliminary stages at this point. With regards to the central location, I think that that is a critical issue. And I think on DCAM's list, it being located in the center of Springfield, they have raised as a priority point for anyone who's looking at the RFP. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. So we have missed a couple of counselors. We're right at the half-hour mark, so we're doing pretty good time-wise. Counselor Govan is remote. So we're going to call on her. And then we'll come to Counselor Davila, who's in person. So Counselor Govan, did you have questions for the DCAM people?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, DCAM, for coming to Springfield again. I think Counselor Delgado asked some of the questions that I wanted to ask. And I'm asked, so now that I know, it sounds like we'll be collecting property tax, taxes on the private property. How much is the lease going to be? Is it going to kind of like even it out? Or will the city be making more money than they're paying? Does anyone know that? Or we don't know yet?
If you could clarify the question a little bit, that would be helpful, I think.
So, okay, I'm sorry. So I'm, I asked about the private-public partnership. It sounds like that's a done deal. And I was asking about what the benefits were to the city on a private-public partnership like this. So I discovered here that the city will be getting property taxes from the building once we lease it. But how much is the rent going to be, so to speak? Is it going to be more than the property taxes? Or will the city be making money?
Well, the state will actually be paying for the lease, not the city. So this will be a state leased facility. Indirectly, the state will be paying the city the property taxes because the landlord will not be doing that out of the goodness of their heart. It will be worked into their lease rate, I'm sure.
I see. And so that's, I guess that was, you know, you know, what are the benefits to the city? You know, but our property tax, you know, residential property taxes. And if we have to pay more money, it'll come out of our property taxes. And residents are already paying a lot in property taxes. So what are the benefits to the city for having this partnership?
Well, I think there's probably two sets of benefits from our perspective. And the city folks may have other perspectives. One is what we've just discussed fundamentally. This approach will likely result in an ownership structure that will be private and consequently will be paying property taxes. Whereas the current Roderick Island courthouse does not pay property taxes other than there is a very modest state distribution for state property. But I think 40,000 is probably high in terms of how much is attributed to this building.
Right.
And the other, but the bigger, I think, benefit is that, you know, a brand-new, robust facility in the city of Springfield will indeed be a facility that will bring a lot of people, not all of them by choice, but will bring a lot of people into the location. And those people will be people who will be making other small purchases when they're there for lunch. But large purchases like, you know, leasing, lawyers will continue to lease office space in the city of Springfield. That, that obviously has an impact on property values and indirectly on state revenues as well, or city revenues as well.
Okay. And I do hope that it is in the downtown area. So I guess another, my last question is, the current Roderick Island courthouse was named after Roderick Ireland, who's a prominent, you know, justice here in, from the city of Springfield. Is that name going to continue to the new Regional Justice Center?
Well, we don't, we at DCAM do not dictate that. But it is my understanding that the Court Administration would like to see that name carried forward onto the new building as well. However, I am, actually, we've been joined by the Court Administrator, Tom Ambrosino. So I'd love to invite him to come up if he wants to say a few words in response to that or anything else about the project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Counselor. I do apologize for being a bit late.
We heard you were in traffic. We know about that traffic.
So in direct response to the question, it is certainly the intent of the Trial Court Administration that the new building retain the name of the Roderick Ireland courthouse. I happen to have the privilege of working for Chief Justice Ireland when I was Executive Director of the SJC. I hold him in incredibly high regard, as I know many people in Springfield do. So absolutely, we will be completely supportive of that. That is sort of out of our hands, as it is out of DCAM's hands. But with support from the legislature, which I'm sure we'll have, we can ensure that the new building carries that distinguished name. I just, if I could just add, I apologize for missing the beginning of the meeting. I just want to say that the Trial Court is in full support of this DCAM effort to create a public-private partnership, to have a brand-new Regional Justice Center in Springfield that will be leased back to the Commonwealth and, and through that, DCAM to the Trial Court for a period of likely 60 years. We support this because it is the most expeditious way for us to get a new Regional Justice Center in the downtown Springfield area. And that is of utmost concern to the Trial Court. We recognize the concerns about the existing building. And we, like most people that work there, are as anxious to get into a new building as possible. And this provides us with the opportunity to get into a new building as soon as possible. So for that reason, the Trial Court fully supports this effort. We are fully a partner with DCAM in this effort. We've had a great collaborative relationship with DCAM. And I expect that to continue as we move forward with this project. Thank you, Counselor.
Great, thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, DCAM, again, for the information and coming out. And thank you for that last comment about the Roderick Ireland name. Thank you.
We have one other city counselor who is here with us, Counselor Davila. So he gets his three minutes now. And, and then we'll move on. I believe we will, we will have completed the questions by the counselors and move on to people that submitted questions ahead of time. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to all of you and to DCAM. Again, thank you for coming to Springfield to discuss this very important project for the, for the city and for the region. I overheard you guys on the way here that the project is pretty much going to be in Springfield. I echo the sentiments. The project, the regional center must be in Springfield. Otherwise, the economic impact to the city is going to be great, is going to be very negative for the city. Please allow me, my apologies, I did not introduce myself. My name is Springfield City Counselor Victor Davila, and I represent the neighborhood of Forest Park. And again, thank you for being here. So some quick questions. My understanding is that 50 St. Street, the current location, was chosen as Site Number One. Is that correct? If I'm not mistaken, that was among the many RFPs? That was number one, ranked number one?
No, the, the-
As term of the site. I know that no site has been chosen yet, but was that number one?
The, this solicitation that we're now discussing has not even gone out. So there are no, there is no ranking of anything to date. There was a site-location exercise that was conducted a couple of years ago that was in large part an assessment to determine if there really was a wealth of potential locations in the city of Springfield. That one did look favorably upon the current location because of its central location in, in downtown Springfield. That is not germane to this because this process will be dependent on what sites proponents bring forward to us to evaluate.
Very well. Thank you for the clarification. Also, let me say that I do believe that if, for whatever reason, 50 St. Street, the current location, is chosen as a potential location, that before we do anything, we must do a land study. Because as we know, there's people who have gotten sick with ALS. Something is going on with that land, whether it is a courthouse, whether it is a park, whether it is housing. Whatever is done on that land, the first step should be a land study to make sure that we're not getting anybody else sick. Something is going on with our property. And we need to figure out exactly what in the name of God is going on with it. Second, I would like to say that I do believe that the regional center must be, must have free parking. We are in a financial-challenged city. And I would hate to sort of whole-hostage people and hustle them for more money we park in. Because a couple of bucks might not be a lot for some of us, but it could be to some of the people going to the courthouse. In regards to the revenue, it is my understanding that the city will lose state aid payments. If that was the case, is there going to be any sort of tax credit afforded for this project, even though it's going to be private-public partnership?
So the, there were two pieces to that question. The, the state aid reduction that would be associated with that property would only take place when the property is no longer state-owned. So not when the new facility is built. But if the old facility, old property, becomes not state property, then the, the formula that calculates what the small amount of state aid that offsets what would be taxable for, of state-owned property would go down by a modest amount. But the amount of aid that the city, But the amount of aid that the city, any city, in the Commonwealth receives for the state property is a tiny fraction of what you would receive if it were truly taxable privately-owned property. So when that action happens at some point in the future, if that property becomes privately-owned, that day, the city will start receiving considerably more revenue from that property, even if nothing else changes, net of whatever the small reduction in the state aid payment is.
And just to be clear, I believe I overheard Madame Caff a little while ago saying that this property will be making taxes payments to the city, correct?
It will be privately-owned, and presumably it will be owned in a way that would be taxable.
At 100%, I'm assuming. Correct, 100%? It will be a regular tax-based property?
Well, it's ultimately, the only way it could be less than that is if the project proponent, whoever that turns out to be, negotiates with this city council to propose a tax increment financing agreement that reduces the taxes in any manner. And that would be at the discretion of this city council.
Okay, very well. And lastly, kind of like in sync with my last question, would like to say that I am the Chair of the City Council, a pilot and new revenue committee. Our mission is to study the needs, possibilities, and resources of the city regarding obtaining new revenue. If this public-private partnership moves forward, we would like to see community benefits to be part of the state contract or negotiations. Would you be able, or would there be a room or agree to a representative of the Springfield City Council or my committee to offer input or suggest community benefits to the city, to the neighborhoods?
Well, I think part of why we're here this evening is to welcome input and suggestions about how members of the city council and also members of the public would view this project to be beneficial to the community, what types of things we should be paying attention to when we receive, hopefully, multiple proposals and are evaluating them to determine which ones would be viewed as more favorable and more beneficial to the community.
Very well understood. I would like to finish by saying again, reiterating that the project must be in Springfield. This is not only an important project for the city, but also an economic-development project for the city. Ladies and gentlemen, our budget is going to be $1 billion.
Councillor Davila, we need to move on.
Coming up to three times. So we want to make sure that we don't have negative impact in our budget and our tax ability with this project. So with that, Mr. Chair, thank you for your kindness. Again, guys, thank you for coming out. God bless you.
Thank you, Councillor Davila. So we have now completed the city council portion of the project. It's quarter seven. We've got five people that submitted questions or comments through email. We're going to go to them next. Trying to keep to the three-minute thing. Before we do that, I want to introduce three former members of the city council who are sitting right in the front row on the left. Former councillor Phil Content, former councillor Pat Markey, and former councillor Tim Ryan. So thank you for coming tonight. Really appreciate it. And the next speaker is Betsy Johnson.
My name is Betsy Johnson. I'm a resident... Okay, Betsy Johnson. I'm a resident of downtown Springfield and the current president of the Metro Center Association, which is the designated neighborhood council. Springfield has 17 of them for the Metro Center Association. So we are particularly concerned when there is the commitment to be in downtown, that it is truly in downtown because the vibrancy of our downtown is something that we're very concerned of. My question deals with some of the sites that have been possibly mentioned have some significant infrastructure improvements needed and associated with them in terms of roadway access and even utilities and that kind of thing. Will the RFP make sure that all of the costs of those kinds of infrastructure improvements, including maybe having to be able to cross Amtrak's railroad, you know, so that there's safety equipment installed for safe crossing of the railroad tracks? Currently, that does not exist for some of the sites. You know, the road, there are potentially some significant roadway improvements needed. And so we're concerned that those costs don't somehow fall back to the city and are not really part of what a developer really commits to. And then, I guess, one further. Any possible opportunity for a developer to make a proposal for using the current site?
I think I can address the last piece, which I think we have a definitive answer for, which is that is highly unlikely. And the reason that is highly unlikely is that the current site is expected to be used until the new site is ready. And one of the reasons that we're trying to move forward with this model is to enable folks to vacate the current site. And the only way to vacate the current site any faster than this is to move them into temporary-leased space, which would cost just as much and take just as long to build as the permanent one. So it's very unlikely that we're going to move them into some kind of temporary space and then move back to the current site after someone builds a new building on the current site. So we do not anticipate that it will be on literally the current site going forward.
Thanks, Adam.
With regard to the infrastructure needs, would that be secondly, clearly, mentioned in the RFP?
Well, the way the state will look at something like that is we are essentially the tenant in this case, right? So we're going to be looking at what the total, how the developer translates the total cost of preparing and delivering a court facility to us. How does that translate into what they're asking us to pay, as well as the nature of the facility itself? How they get to, how they finance it, is really not for us to dictate. I do think there are a lot of folks in the room who will have a lot of voice in what the city contributes or doesn't contribute to that, but that's probably not the people at this table here.
Thanks, Adam, and thanks, Betsy, for your question. I just need to read this because we haven't, I haven't really been following the rules on the bell. So we can't ring the bell until I share this information. Speakers have three minutes. Questions will be timed. Questions will be timed. A bell will ring. It'll ring one time at 2:45, then it will ring two times at 3:00, and that is when the time is over. And we need to keep to something like that in order to have a shot at 7:30 conclusion because I'm sure there's plenty of people who have questions. So I've now announced that, so that's on. And the next speaker is Tom Henshaw.
My poster chair, the mic on?
It's on.
I've never done this before, so I'm a builder. Is it all right? You can hear me?
Yep.
I came here tonight to support Tim Allen, who's one of the most honest guys I ever met, a decent human being. He told me he was having trouble getting people to come to the meeting, you know? So I thought, well, I'll come and see what it's all about. I'm a builder, been here 60 years, grew up in Brighton and where the stockyards used to be. None of these people here were born then, but I'm still going. I was in the Army, went to Northeast, was in the Army, Korea, Vietnam. Came out here about 60 years ago, and I've built 500 buildings. And some of them are okay, you know? I mean, I'm not questioning that, but I did do something for DCAM. We had them for 30 years. Welfare building down on... They were there 30 years, good tenants. And I've built YMCA's, hockey rinks, anything you can think of, except no Catholic churches. And I wasn't altar boy, but they have their own way of doing things.
We don't build Catholic churches either, so I guess we're...
Yeah, so anyway, one of the... I didn't know what I was supposed to say or what I was supposed to do. I found a free parking space. Everything was good. I saw on one of your slides, it said Downtown Vitality. It was like, okay, that's what we should have. The place is dying slowly. Casino didn't do it. All these buildings are vacant. And my thought was, we've got to strengthen the core. We never will get another chance, most likely, to build a building like this, a public building, with the regular kind of money that they spend. I do them for half, but you've got to, you know? That's why I've never been here before. Nobody wants to hire guys who do handshakes, you know? So anyway, Downtown Vitality is very important. If we don't do something now, there'll be nothing left. And when I talked to Timmy, he said, "I can't get the lawyers to support it, you know, to show up for the meeting." And you can understand, they're all trying to make a living. They're not able to, like, step out and out front, you know? And I would say it's not that difficult. I have a few ideas on where you could put it. You know, I would never come without ideas or we'd get thrown out, you know? Some of the nuns, I liked them, some they didn't, you know? Anyway, that's all I can say. You couldn't get a better guy than Tim. He's honest. He does everything by the book. You don't run into people like him. So if I can help you, I'm here to help you, and good luck. All right?
Thank you, Tom. Our next speaker is former city councillor and Judge Phil Content.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner and team. I'm, like everyone else, grateful that you came out here and to hear some more input on this. And although it's kind of late in the game, I do have some thoughts that, based on my own experience, besides being on the city council a million years ago. I was a district court judge for 38 years. And most of that time, I was dealing with this very subject. Building courthouses, leasing courthouses, because I was in the Westfield District Court, where we've been leasing two different facilities for 38 years, I think we've been leasing courthouses. And I think the lessons that I took from all those dealings, because we got into negotiations about building a courthouse, leasing a courthouse. And I think, in general, it's very short-sighted to be leasing courthouses, especially in major cities where you have a major court facility with all the different departments in it. There's always going to be courts in Springfield area because it's one of the largest cities in the state. And so we're talking about a kind of forever business. It's not something that's just going to be in business for 10 years or 20 years. So, you know, in the case of what I experienced in Westfield, at the time that we entered into the first lease agreement there, the county, Hammond County, was still building courthouses in those days. And they built when nobody else was doing it around the state. So they built the Palmer Courthouse, the Chickaby Courthouse, and showing how old I am now, those courthouses cost like $3 million to $3 to $5 million. But the point is that when the state decided to go into leasing the courthouses, we paid more than the $3 or $4 million in the first five or seven years of the lease. And so the building was almost totally paid for by the time we got through the first round or the second round of a five-year lease. And so the state could have built a courthouse and saved a lot of money because they're still renting it today, another, a second facility. And the per-square-foot rent at that time, and I think it's continued, you know, just with updated figures and higher rents, obviously, but the per-square-footage rental was...
Phil, that was the bell.
Okay. Was way over what the first-class office space rental was in Springfield, not to mention in Westfield, where it wasn't even close to Springfield's. So the point is that the rents were extremely high. When you're leasing, the incumbent who owns the lease or holds the lease has a total advantage when it comes to rebidding or renewing the lease because they've already paid for the whole thing. So I understand that. And I mean, I spent many years in my career in the Springfield courthouse, and I understand the urgent need for speed. And although there was a comment, I think it's kind of been written off, but the idea of renting temporary space while you build a courthouse that the state would own would cost more, you know, in the initial years, but it's been done successfully in other places. In Greenfield, they leased for a few years a nice office space for all the courthouses while they renovated and put a huge addition on. Did something similar in Woburn, which Cambridge Court. So I would, I guess I'd offer as suggestions, if it's not too late, one is that a lease of a temporary place that could be done fairly, hopefully, quicker while a courthouse is being built. But the other would be perhaps a lease with an option to buy so that at some point down the road, the state could at least have the option of trying to buy the property if they were satisfied with it and kind of end being a tenant forever. So those are just, you know, based on my experience of working and serving in leased buildings versus Commonwealth-owned buildings, so thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Thanks for your comments. All right, we've got two people who signed up who still haven't spoken. And after that, we'll, you know, if somebody asked if we could speak again, when we get past the next two speakers, we'll determine how we can get further input. The next speaker is Karen Lee.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. I'm going to try to speed through this. Over the past several months, I've spoken with individuals and groups, residents, attorneys, and others in an attempt to create awareness about what's next for the Regional Justice Center. And what I learned is that it can be divided, or they can be divided into loosely four groups. And there are subsets of these groups, but we don't have that kind of time here. The first group, including myself, are the democracy warriors who believe that public spaces should be owned by the public and the courthouse should be built on public land. The second group are those who trust the economic-development marketeers who offer flashy promises to a location that desperately needs hope. The third group wants to see a courthouse built close to Court Square so that the integrity of the existing law firms, restaurants, and other businesses do not shudder and wait for a new plan. The fourth group doesn't care where you put the courthouse as long as it's done quickly. All four groups have valid positions, but I'm going to focus on Group Four. In 2022 and even before that time, everyone seemed in agreement that the courthouse employees were the priority. Also, in 2022, Mass Development Estate Agency owned 1550 Main Street or the old federal courthouse. Did anyone inquire about the seemingly perfect solution? Yes, it shorts some space requirements and needs renovation for reuse, but it was a former courthouse, and no special permits are needed, no rerouting of traffic, no DPW work, no civil review. And it has an underground parking with entrance into the courthouse, skywalks to two adjacent parking garages, and an abundance of other amenities within walking distance and a block or so from Court Square. Instead, in 2023, 1550 Main was sold for $6 million to two private owners of Tower Square. Local officials rejoiced over the sale and the future of the new economic development, while at the same time expressing grave concern over the health issues related to the current courthouse and advancing the idea that building a new courthouse on private land at the North Riverfront was the quickest way to a fast build. Were the employees used as pawns by Group Number Two, the economic-development marketeers, to advance this private lease proposal? And was the AMB unwittingly a victim that gave credence to it when a viable solution for the people was overlooked? The people needed that building. We didn't need office and retail space. The people of the United States paid for that building, $15 million in 1981, or $57 million in today's money. And it was sold to private owners for just $6 million. Taking ownership would alleviate the priority concern and give time to explore options. I can't read any more of this. I think Springfield and the people of Massachusetts deserve better than what is being offered. So I have, in closing, two questions. I'd appreciate an answer if you can. Will your division reach out to the current owners of 1550 Main Street and make an offer to purchase, not to lease, but to purchase because we'll need the option to for growth? The governor promised $106 million for the courthouse. Could the building be bought and renovated for that money? And number two, if we're in earnest that the employees are the priority, then why, after three years, are they still there? And what is the immediate plan for them? Thank you. I know you didn't have to come back to Springfield. You weren't obligated. You gave two hearings, but I appreciate that you're here. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Karen.
Thank you. And just to clarify, I feel like we did have to come back to Springfield, and we do have to continue coming back to Springfield and expect that we indeed will be as this process progresses and continues. So I appreciate your thanking us for being here, but we're supposed to be here. And it's actually a problem if people in our roles are not coming out to meet with you. To try to answer your question about 1550 Main Street, we will not be contacting that owner and asking to purchase that property. But we definitely would welcome, when we put out this solicitation, if the owners of that building are interested in making a proposal, we would welcome and encourage that. And if it is, as you say, a really great building that might be able to be developed more expeditiously, then that would probably put them in a position where they might have a strong proposal. So if they're here, or if you know them, we would welcome hearing from them, just like we would frankly welcome hearing from as many parties that have sites and/or development visions for our building anywhere in the target area of Springfield. We welcome that as well. We are not looking to... We're not going to be soliciting other functions. So I think you mentioned that a concern that we would be asking for retail or office or all those sorts of things. We're going to be putting out a requirement for what the court needs, asking for the construction of a court facility that we would lease. Now, if a developer who is responsive to our solicitation chooses to contemplate it being part of something else, something larger, that's their choice, not ours. But we will evaluate whether that translates to a successful project for the court. We're not looking at what else is part of a development or not. That's not really our, that's not our role or responsibility in this mix.
So I think you misunderstood me. That what I meant is Springfield didn't need more retail or office space. What we needed was that building. And that's what's in there now, is retail and office space.
All right. I apologize for misunderstanding.
No, but I'm glad you clarified it because for other applications that come in, that's an important detail. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
And about the employees?
Thank you. We have one other person who signed up ahead of time. I'm not sure I got the name right. Otonio Figueroa Duran.
You got it right.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the council and to the Chairperson Allen for having us and to, for considering our comment tonight. My name is Otonio Figueroa Duran. I am the Employee Relations Coordinator for SEIU 32BJ, a union that represents 20,000 service workers across New England. We're here to speak on the importance of providing good jobs to workers at whatever development is approved for the Regional Justice Center project that you are considering. Our membership includes the cleaners at One Monarch Place, a building owned by the Pignelli Family Limited Partnership. Peter Pignelli, whose proposal is likely to be considered for this project, is a member of the holding company that oversees the partnership, along with his brother Paul Pignelli, who is president of the company. The cleaners at One Monarch Place now have good jobs with regular wage increases and benefits, including a retirement pension. But management at One Monarch Place has decided to change the cleaning contractor, to bring another cleaning contractor, Environment Control, Environmental Control Connecticut Valley, Inc. Environment Control is scheduled to start tomorrow, May 1st. But they have not committed to maintaining the wages, to maintaining the wages and benefits standard for hiring or to hire the existing workers, some of whom have worked there for 25 years. James is here tonight. He works there as a cleaner at One Monarch Place. The people of Springfield should be concerned. A few years ago, at the start of the pandemic, when Environment Control took over the cleaning contract at one of the downtown Hartford largest office building, they refused to hire the existing cleaners and pay the replacement substandard wages and benefits. We do not want them to undermine the good jobs here in Springfield the same way that they did in Hartford. Good jobs may make our community stronger, and local economic development project like this, like the courthouse project, should prioritize these good jobs. We urge everyone involved in the process to consider what will make our working families stronger or weakened here in Springfield. On behalf of the 14 cleaners at the Monarch, at One Monarch Place, and the 20,000 32BJ members in New England, I thank you for your time, for your consideration, and I don't have, if I have time, Chairman Allen, to allow James, a cleaner, to explain in one minute the impact of this on him.
Thank you.
It's a disappointment, for one thing. I mean, I'm out of a job tomorrow, and we didn't see this coming. I've been there 20 years, more than that even. And, I don't know, just, I don't know, put your, aside yourself, you know? You've got nothing to go back on now. You can try to get another job. I'm 65 years old now. Try to get another job now. It's like, you know, that's going to be tough, way tough. When I was younger, that was okay. But now, I don't know. So it's pretty much at a dead end here, I guess.
Sorry, sorry you're in that situation, and thank you for your comments. Appreciate you being here.
I don't believe there was actually a question for us, but I do want to clarify something to make sure that folks do understand. The operations of this new facility are expected to continue to be by state employees working for the trial court, and I believe they're unionized, not the employees in the new trial court facility, regardless of where it ends up. Even though we will be leasing it, the operation and maintenance of it will be day-to-day, will be by state employees who are unionized, not, it will not be something of the landlord's responsibility.
And thank you for clarifying, right? We understand that, what we're trying to put in perspective is the pattern or behaviors or one of the potential developers of this project, what they're doing in Springfield now.
Thank you for your comments. We're now at 7:10, around that. The D.C.A.M. people proposed originally a 6 o'clock to 7:30 timeframe, so we're still within that timeframe. It's possible that they would stay longer, but let's, first, I want to make sure we have everyone who is in the public who might want, maybe you didn't submit a question. I know there's counselors who want to speak again, but I think we owe it to the public to speak. So hold on, Stephen, let's, who would like to speak? Let's, so.
I'll take my ask first. Let's just take my question out.
So Pat, could you, why don't we just go in order? Pat Markie.
Well, but we're going to the public now, so I'll try to get you in, Tracey.
So my name's Pat Markie. I've had, I'm a lawyer in town. Several people here are lawyers downtown. I've been here with the law office in walking distance of the courthouse for 26 years. Other lawyers have been here for even longer. We have our offices here in the heart of Springfield because we can walk to court. If the court is not in metro center, those offices will disappear. COVID was bad enough. There's all kinds of vacancies in these buildings. Which leads me to another suggestion. I was saddened to hear that the current site is not among those being considered because it has to be occupied until the end. And as Judge Content mentioned, there are many courthouses throughout the state that get built on the same site as the old existing courthouse. I traveled to Greenfield for a couple of years and went to a courthouse in an office park because the old courthouse was getting built into something beautiful. I suggest that that could happen here, and I hope that your request for proposals entertains that and indeed solicits that as a possibility. The other thing that I hope you consider in crafting your RFP, because your RFP can determine precisely where it's going to go, I hope you consider soliciting bids and encouraging bids, that if it doesn't involve leasing a space somewhere else in these vacant office buildings in Springfield while a new courthouse is being constructed, that you receive and solicit bids that deal with the old building. I don't want our city to get it for a buck because it will sit vacant for 15 years, just like the old school department. That unfortunately is a lot of how development happens in Springfield. A bright new shiny building gets built, and the old one sits vacant for 15 years. So I would hope that some of the bidders consider proposing and taking on how to demolish the old building if the new building doesn't go on that site, and putting it in conditions that would leave someone other than the city and the Springfield Redevelopment Authority with the responsibility for dealing with the vacant building. The best bid would be a bid that relocates on that site. The second-best bid would be one that locates also within walking distance of all our offices and makes some plans for remediation of the old building. We don't want the old courthouse to sit there for 15 years, especially after we've got new apartment buildings over here. We've got to revitalize Court Square. We've got to revitalize Civic Center, Passageway. A vacant building is what we're trying to avoid. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Pat.
I do, one more cent, sorry, third cent. This is a question. What happens if there is only one bidder? What are you going to do?
So it's, it is our strong desire and hope that we will see more than one or two bids, but in fact, that we will see hopefully several bids. Our optimism for that comes from the fact that this is a, frankly, we are at a time where the commercial real estate market everywhere, particularly in the northeast part of the country, is not particularly strong. There are not a lot of tenants out there since COVID looking for space. It's not a Springfield problem. It's a everywhere problem. The good news for us as a tenant looking for space and putting what is essentially a 300,000-square-foot requirement in the market is that that is likely to be very attractive. And hopefully it will, it's large enough that it should be attractive to folks from a pretty broad radius of, you know, potential market, I suppose. And hopefully, as a result of that, we will see a fair amount of response to this proposal. And I think the strongest proposals, for anybody who's on the, on this end of a solicitation, the strongest proposals always emerge from having a healthy amount of competition, even, even the same proposal, if they didn't have competition, would probably be less attractive than if they knew they did have competition. And frankly, we hope to see a healthy amount of competition, and that's what will get the best result for the trial court, for the Commonwealth, and frankly, for the city of Springfield.
I appreciate that. I also felt that if we don't ask the question, what can we do?
We would evaluate that bid, and I can't tell you depend, without having a bid of any kind, I don't, I can't speak to how, whether it would be one that we could accept or not. We have had cases where we have received only one bid for construction. We've had cases where we've received only one bid for a leasing requirement or for a real, other form of real estate transaction, where that bid has been fantastic. We have had other cases where we've received only one bid or only two or three bids, and none of them have been acceptable. And at that point, we've had to reconsider and reissue. So it's really, it would depend on the quality of that bid.
Okay, so we're at 7:15. I'd like to take a few more people from the public. There's a couple city counselors that would like to speak again. It's hard to fit all that in in 12 minutes. So Jay Littori, why don't you take, and then the woman behind you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of great questions, so I'll try to be succinct. Let me just say, though, I think this is great for the city. We've got the council here. We've got developers. We've got business owners. We've got hotel owners. We've got lawyers. This is good on a Wednesday night at 6:00 PM when it's 75 degrees out. That's good for our city. I'm also disappointed that I think the most logical solution, which is to rebuild the courthouse where it is, is off the table, but I appreciate your candor. And I'm also disappointed that, given that it's a sick courthouse, and we've known about it for so many years, that we've still got so many people working in it, but I know that we're all trying to get to a better solution. So, you know, my question and my comment is about the RFP. And because this process has taken one major and obvious option off the table, what I'd like to understand is, can your RFP require what I'm going to call an economic impact statement for the city that you could grade along with everything else? Because here's the thing, I see Jeff Sullivan here, I see Ray Barry here, I see Ellen Freiman was here, all sorts of different businesses. And former Councilman Markie put it so perfectly, depending on where you put it, impacts all of downtown Springfield and the whole city immensely. Some people are going to win, depending on how you put it, and some people are going to lose tremendously, depending on where it's going to go. And so what I'd like to see is this RFP package, and I'd like to see, you know, the results be transparent about, this is the type of new development that's going to come if we put it here, and also, these are the existing developments that may suffer if you put it here. And I want that to be very transparent so that when the state makes its decision, that everyone knows that everyone's concerns and economic vitality were weighed as part of this. So if you could comment on whether that type of proposal could be incorporated into your RFP, I think that would be, you know, of value for everyone to hear. So I thank you.
Pretty sure we probably won't use the word suck in our RFP, but, but I actually am really interested in the idea of evaluating economic impact, and it's something we've heard in prior forums as well, and it's frankly obvious, but it's something that is clearly important. And so figuring out how to incorporate a consideration for economic impact into the process is something we are taking seriously. I don't have an answer for you to exactly what form that will take. I'm intrigued, actually, by your suggestion, and we will definitely take a look at whether asking them to present some sort of an economic impact statement could be a helpful tool for getting there. But we definitely have heard loud and clear the concerns about the economic impact of this development on the city and on its surroundings, and that that is something that is of importance to people. And that's, frankly, that's really why we are out here. We have not issued this RFP. We are still crafting it, and we are here to try to figure out how to incorporate what we're hearing to provide the strongest RFP that we can.
Okay. Well, then I'll just close in saying I thank you, and I thank you, Councilor Allen, and you, Karen Lee, for working so hard to get people up here. I appreciate it.
Okay, so thank you, Jay. This woman is next. And I'm suggesting, I think Adam said they would stay till quarter of, so it gives us a little more time. So why don't we split the 12 minutes between now and 25 of with the public, and then the city council can have their last few minutes? And, okay, let's just be as fast as you can as people want to speak.
I'm Michelle Graut. I'm the Executive Director of the Springfield Business Improvement District. I have a very clear and direct question that kind of feeds off of what Jay said and the sentiment of what I've heard throughout this evening's hearings, the downtown. How are you defining the downtown? Downtown is a very broad statement, and do you have boundaries in which you are considering proposals that actually you are considering as the downtown? Because we have north end, we have south end, and we have metro center. So my question is clear and direct. What do you consider the downtown, and do you have boundaries for that?
Given the, given time, I'll try to answer very quickly as well.
If you don't have any, I could give you some.
Well. Yeah. So we do not yet, we have not yet established any boundaries beyond the fact that we are absolutely requiring this to be in the city of Springfield. Part of what we are learning here is, we will freely admit, I don't believe anyone at this table is from Springfield. You know Springfield much better than we do, and we are actually interested in hearing what that definition should be. So you joke that you might offer us that. We would welcome people's ideas about what should be prioritized. Now, I don't think it's in our interest, given the comments about trying to stimulate competition, to be fundamentally restrictive beyond staying within the boundaries of Springfield. But we can be very, we can have comparative criteria that provide significant advantage to particular geographies in the responses. And I think that's really the approach that we would be interested in taking if we are hearing, and I think we are hearing a lot tonight, that there is an impact area associated with this facility, and the community wants to make sure that that impact area is in a certain geography. So if there are, what I guess I would welcome, I don't think it's something where we're going to have everybody draw a map tonight, we don't have time for that, but I would certainly welcome, at the end of our presentation, there was an email address for Kendra, and I think it's actually on our website as well. And if people have feelings about where you feel should be prioritized with respect to this sort of target search area, we would welcome you sharing those with us, and we will certainly take them into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Who else wanted to speak? Tim Ryan, you're right ahead, and then the woman in the red and Stephen Howard after. That will do, those three people, you've got a minute or two, or a couple minutes each.
Thank you. Tim Ryan, I'm, unlike Patrick, 39 years almost as an attorney. In all of that time, I've been in the downtown business district, walking to the courts daily, several times a day, looking at my friend Sean Curran, former state rep Sean Curran. And too often, those of us in the city feel like we're the redheaded stepchild of state government. This is your chance, ladies and gentlemen. You've never built a courthouse in Springfield before. That courthouse was built by the Hammond County. So this is your opportunity to do it and do it well. So this is your opportunity to do it and do it well. I've been in Brockton. I've been in the beautiful buildings you have in Boston, the new Boston District Court down there. You know, it's stunning when we as lawyers, judges, are expected to slave away in what is clearly an inappropriate building. But my questions are very specific. What is the average daily commuter coming into this complex? And what do you have in terms of private versus public transportation? And what do you have for needs for parking? Obviously, in the downtown district, we have the garage that the state just built, we have the MGM, we have the garage under the highway, we have the garage at Tower Square, and we have the land lot behind the TD Bank. It's got to be 3,000 to 5,000 parking spaces. So in your planning, if we're not in the downtown district, what do you have for parking? And finally, is your lease, because it's a state lease, is that going to happen in the language, subject to appropriation?
So with respect to both access to public transportation and access to publicly available parking, both of those are things we've heard before, and we do absolutely anticipate those will also be comparative advantage criteria for site selection. The, and it, our lease will indeed have the subject-to-appropriation language. We actually don't really have a choice about that. We can't.
Which narrows the number of people who can bid.
Sorry?
Which narrows the number of people who can bid.
Well, that's not been our experience, actually. We, we do, again, as I said, we are the largest commercial leasing tenant in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we receive large numbers of proposals for our attractive bids. For example, the crime lab that I mentioned earlier, I believe we had 15 proposals. So, yeah, I'm sure there are people who don't like that language, but the trade-off for that is that there probably is no more reliable credit tenant in the commercial marketplace than the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So while that is a legal requirement, because we, as an executive agency, cannot appropriate funds on behalf of the legislature, we have to have that language in there for that reason. It isn't, it is not a provision that we exercise on any kind of regular basis, because the legislature also has a lot of respect for the credit of the Commonwealth, and they tend to appropriate the funds that are necessary to meet the Commonwealth's commitments.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions?
All right. Dr. Dee Brown, I'm a part of McKnight Neighborhood Council, but I'm representing myself right now. Any, as far as development, anybody that's in business, the biggest thing that people treat you, the biggest mantra is location, location, location. You cannot cheat location. Saying it is in Springfield is not saying anything if it's not in a place that is equitable as far as access is concerned. The VA, I'm a veteran as well, disabled veteran. The VA Hospital in North Hampton, they wanted to move it, and, and since you locate, it's been there for a while, it's a staple in that community. People fought against that because it was going to create a vacuum. If you move it from where it is now to any other place that is not centrally located, you're going to create a vacuum. We have enough dead pockets in the downtown area, and that is a big one we can't afford to have. And so doing it in stages, having a place like this, a lot of empty offices that we can have temporary spots in while we're doing it. Yes, having a 300,000 thing sounds nice, but if you want to involve the local developers, maybe that's not the big, big names but are still competent enough, you can break it up, like split it in half, 150,000, 150,000, and, and now you, now you multiply the number of economic development within the city and still provide a quality space for lawyers and, and judges and workers alike. So let's be creative. Let's, let's answer the, answer the bell, provide a location, and also, last point and question, when you have a public-private venture, there's always a perception that that person that owns that land will have a conflict, like they're almost untouchable now because they own that land, and, and if somebody else has a conflict against them on another development, they, there's a perception that they have leverage in the legal system because they own the land that the legal system sits on. So it only makes sense that you have it on a neutral location, whether it's municipal, whether it's state, we don't care as long as one of y'all own it, you know? And then if you split it up, now you have more, more people that can eat from the pie. So if you can really consider hybrid solution, just like the VA did, they rebuilt it in place so that there is not a vacuum. We cannot afford another vacuum. I think the people on this front row and the back have said it, and I really hope you guys consider a more hybrid thing. And I wish we would have took that federal court because that's a beautiful building, but that's neither here nor there. Please, 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 think about the, if you're trying to help us, help us. You know, you're not from the area, we get that. So we're trying to help you. Somewhere local, split it up, lease, lease a place temporarily in one of, one of these plenty vacant spots, and allow everybody to eat, the, the small contractors, subcontractors, and larger contractors alike. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Stephen Howard is going to speak now. I've got a couple of minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I'll try and be short. First off, the pink elephant in the room has not been mentioned, the health of the employees at the courthouse. That's the reason why this is happening right now. No one here has mentioned that. What happens to these employees between now and whenever this building is ready to be occupied, to be utilized? Now, this building here, you look around this building, there are about at least four or five rooms, a little, some, a little smaller than this, that could be used as courthouses so that these folks could move into this building, and this is just on this floor, five, five rooms that could be utilized as courthouses. Then you look around the rest of the building to see how many other rooms could be utilized so that court cases could be heard. What you're doing is you're taking the employees and putting them in a safe place instead of staying in, in a contaminated building until whenever it is that they have to move out. While they're here, some of the, the money that is being spent to put up a new building could instead be used to rehab that building because it's in a very convenient location as opposed to having people who are late for court trying to rush across a train track with a train coming down, coming down, who may not want to wait for the train. How much parking space is there over? Look, this building, you should do a survey to see how many people could be moved here to safeguard the health of the workers until the building is ready, until it's been renovated. And I'm surprised that it took this point in, in, in this whole process, coming down to the end of the, the race, for you to actually be coming to us the way you are tonight. Because I'm sure there are lots of people here who want to say stuff, but they can't. So you can't hear what we have to say. And this later in the process, I think it disrespects this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay, it's 7:34, so we've got two things left. We're not going to any more public because we're running out of time. People are starting to lose, so, to leave. So we're going to go Tracy Whitfield, get a few minutes, a couple of minutes, and Jose's going to finish up. We have to make a motion to close the meeting and things like that. And I just want to make, before we get to that, in case people leave, I want to thank you all for coming and participating in this thing. I hope it's been useful. For, it's been very useful for me. It's what I envisioned when I asked them to come. So I appreciate everybody's participation and, and respect for each other's points of view, et cetera. So thank you for that. Okay, Tracy.
Thank you. First, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank Karen Lee for her advocacy and her work on getting this going right in us letters, and then I want to thank Counselor Allen for getting in touch with DCAM, and then you coming here again. And I love that you said you'll be here more often because it is, we are part of the state, and a lot of times we do feel left out. But what struck me was Judge Content, that Judge Content, when he said all the problems that were had with the lease option, and I know that it was voted for a lease option on January 21st, I believe, is that the final say? Because my concern is 60 years. You've got 40 years, and 10 years, and then 10 years, and then what happens? Once the lease is done and no more options are there, and we're probably all gone, where does that leave the courthouse? What if the developers say, well, we're done, I mean, the owners say, we're done with the courthouse, now we can make more money doing something else? Where does that leave the courthouse? So I don't know if you could answer that, and then I probably got like two more questions after that.
Well, in terms of the question about the, what happens in 60 years, I do think you're probably right that we won't be here either. But the...
But my kids will, and their kids will.
Absolutely. But I think, I think another way to think about it is even when we build public buildings, very often by 50 or 60 years, we are absolutely planning for their comprehensive renewal, if not full replacement. So there's a big difference between the kinds of 10-year leases that the speaker was talking about before, which are inherently short-term and are not a substitution for a sort of permanent building. And what we are contemplating here, which is essentially just to have, to take advantage and leverage the, the efficiency of private construction to be able to build it faster, but we are asking that, we are going to be supplying requirements that they essentially build a public building. And for, once the building is up and running, it's going to feel, the, the average user of the building will not know who owns it. They will perceive it to be a court just like any other. At the end of 50 or 60 years, part of why we did a 40 and then we, we have options after that is that at that point, the Commonwealth can make some decisions depending on the condition of the building, depending on the needs of the facility at that point. I mean, things evolve. Most public uses are not the same as they were 60 years ago. You know, think about how you do business today and compare that to 60 years ago. It's very likely we may need a very different kind of facility to effectively deliver court functions 40, 50, 60 years from now. And at that point, we'll have the option to consider if it's available to us renewing in that facility or seeking a new facility, either publicly constructed or privately constructed at that time as is, feels most appropriate at that time.
And then my second question, thank you for that answer. I can agree with some of those points, and I'm hoping that that's the truth when, when I'm not here anymore. My second question, the concern in the health of the employees that work there, I don't understand why it hasn't been a consideration sooner. My sister works there, and she was always saying, something's wrong. I keep getting allergies. Face blows up, she has to stay home, take sick leave, and people have died. And we have not thought about moving employees yet, and then we're still not going to move them, and we have to go through our fee process and then get the site ready, and then, then the whole build of it. So they might be there another two years, and there has been no consideration to move them to temporary locations?
There is no expectation at the moment that we would be moving anyone to temporary locations. I do understand, I, I am certainly not a medical professional, and I have not been involved in any medical assessments of the condition of the building, but I do believe that the, the court administration has actually conducted quite a bit of, of examination of that. And I know they are very sensitive to, to trying to take care of their employees.
Yeah, they have...
What we, what we can do as the state agency that's involved in facilities, and we, we have been doing, and in fact, as recently as the, right after the first visit I took to the building a little over a year ago, we got involved with providing some funding to make some changes and improvements to the HVAC system in a portion of that building. I'm not sure it was in any way related to the things that people are concerned about specifically, but it does result in making that building a little more comfortable for people in the building while we wait to get the new facility built. And this will not be a welcome answer, but I want to be honest, and I want everybody to leave with the right impression, it's going to be a little longer than two years. It's going to be faster than it would have been for us to build it ourselves by several years, but it is likely to be a few more than two years before it's built open.
Like four years?
I think that's probably a closer, a closer target, but I don't think we know exactly until we get the proposals from the developer exactly how long it will take for them to build it.
Can you record this as seven years?
Up to. And, and we also, I think, point out that if we were to build it ourselves, it could be well into the 2030s, but by the time we'd be able to complete it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Those are my questions, so thank you.
You're all set? Thank you. We're early at the end. Counselor Delgado is going to speak. He and Counselor Walsh, who had to leave, are the other members of the Finance Committee. He has one substantive question, I believe, to ask, and then he's going to make a motion to close the meeting. I want to thank Adam Baiki and all of his team. It's, it's 20, it's almost quarter of eight. They stayed an extra 15 minutes. I think it's great, it's great to have this support. It's great they came. When I sent him that letter shortly after those hearings in January, I got an immediate response, immediate response that they were happy to come here. So they followed through on that, and we followed through on that by having a, a good showing and a lot of good questions and input. So appreciate everybody doing that. That's, that was, I was hoping would happen. So Counselor Delgado?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I do want to reiterate, thank you to, you know, it's not just the DCAM team. We have the Commissioner of DCAM here at this, and so I don't know how often commissioners go out to public, but the fact that, that you're here, I really appreciate that. I wasn't going to mention this, but in my previous role in working for the previous governor administration, I was actually in the room, we were talking about what was going on, and we were getting concerns about the sick folks, and it was actually me advocating to the governor at that point to say, we need to do something about this building. And him asking me, what's the real situation? Because you got signs from the Secretary of ANF saying something, you've got the folks, and I said, Governor, this is a sick building. So the fact, and when he heard that, he said, all right, we're going to put some, we're going to do something about it. And DCAM stepped up, Secretary of ANF stepped up at that point when they had the mandate. So to see that we're here, we're still taking a while, but to see it from this side, I just appreciate that something is going on. With that being said, I've heard a number of great suggestions from folks in the audience, and one of the things that stuck out to me were a number of the suggestions that I wasn't even, didn't even think about, but just hoping that at some point, I know you said it's unlikely that you choose the current site, but I hope that you look at that still as a potential, all your options, so as your words said, not restrictive of what we're able to do, including Mr. Howard mentioned, I don't know about City Hall, but I do know that the state building on Dwight Street also has some unused courtrooms as well. You know, in my time, my previous role, you know, those sat vacant, unused, and I know you've moved, we've moved people temporarily to that building as well. So there's a number of unused courtrooms in there as well. With that being said, Mr. Chair, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to, to close this meeting.
I second Counselor Walsh's idea to vote on it, but I am, so I agree. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much for coming out and being a part of this conference.